Welcome to the overheard podcast recorded live in Banff. My name is Daniel Brutal. With me always is my co-host.
Matty Rage.
What is good? If it's your first time joining us, please don't forget, smash that like and subscribe. Tons of people. I think like we have ninety-three percent new viewers every week, which is crazy, right?
Well, that's sick.
So if you're new, do us a favor. You like what's going on here? Give us like, subscribe. Helps you helps us bring you more episodes. Um, every week. I mean, they're coming anyways. They're just gonna get better.
Regardless, they're coming regardless, whether you want it or not.
Yeah. This week, very special guest. We were sitting down with Mark Walker. He's a candidate in our next town council run. How are you doing today?
I'm good. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you so much for taking the time to chat with us.
My pleasure.
No doubt.
Before we get too far into things, we got to check in with our homies over at Drink Shaft, keeping us flagrated.
What's flagrated?
Flydrated.
Flydrated.
It's hydrated, but fly at the same time.
Alright, alright, I'm gonna do it.
It's a new thing I'm running with. Uh, we'll be back with you in twenty seconds. Welcome back to the show. Thank you so much to our friends over at Drink Shaft. You can get them at Townhouse Liquor, non-alcoholic and alcoholic. I like keeping four packs in my fridge in case I'm running late for work. Bingo bango. Quick one on the way out the door. What about you, Matt? You like the boozy ones?
Uh, I haven't even tried the boozy ones outside of being at the bar and just ordering a shaft. Uh, but I had been drinking the crap out of these for DJ sets.
Nice.
You had two hour DJ set, three hour DJ set, crush one of these bingo bango, you're ready to rock, dude.
True. You can't be too mangled when you're DJing. So mixing it on alky every now and again. That's a great, great call. Um, go grab yours today down at Townhouse Liquor or at the Rosen Crown. They're pretty awesome, too.
Yeah.
Go check them out. Just had a huge party the other day. Did you go?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Shaft sack was all set up there. Oh, yeah, dude. It was a good time. Couple of DJs, lots of good prizes.
Like half the town was hungover the next day.
Yeah. It popped off pretty good, dude. Like by the time it was like four o'clock, it was pretty much packed in there, but.
Amazing. Big, big shout out. Um, let's get down to business. Mark Walker, thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
What's going on today?
Uh, today is beautiful day. Been out on my bike. I had a meeting with somebody just at a coffee shop, chatting about local issues and, you know.
About to get a lot of that done.
Oh, yeah. It's something I really like doing anyway, right?
For sure.
Before I was even running, I just liked to, to talk about the stuff that's going on in town and, you know, it just happens to line up with actually running for council, so.
It's kind of the best way to stay informed is talking to people in the community, right? Like see what the public perception is. Same with online, like your presence online is pretty, pretty sweet on the Facebook page. Which by the way, we're not affiliated with, just, uh, just to mention.
Right. Yeah. I mean, you do cover like stuff that happens on the page sometimes.
Yeah, like we used to do like a bunch of posts from there and stuff, and a lot of our content was derived from there, but now like, I don't know, not so much. We've kind of moved away from it.
Okay, I have to, I have to ask you guys a question just off topic slightly, but Facebook group points. Do you know what those are?
No idea.
You get points there's points. Like if you go to a group that you're a member of.
Yeah.
You can like click the members or whatever, and you can see how many points you have. And they like measure engagement, like how many posts you've made, how many, how many like replies you get, how much engagement and like.
That must be like the.
Eight thousand points. I don't know what to do with them. I can't redeem them. The only thing I can, and you can't even see like a list of everybody's points. You can only see like your points, but you can click on somebody and see their points.
Like I'll get those. Sometimes you get like a top earner badge, which is for those points.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Like top contributor as well. You'll see on some posts as well. I just figured that was people that had.
It was only yesterday I found somebody that has more points than me.
Who was it?
Uh, it's my buddy Dave. He lives down the street from me. Dave Williams.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, he posts all the time, right? And I had to send him a message. I was like, what gives? I thought I had the most points, but.
Uh, the competition.
Where's the, there?
Either or, either or. Competition's on now.
You got me beat, but I'm coming for you. In Facebook group points.
If anyone knows what they're for, please enlighten us in the comments, cause like, no idea. Uh, for those that don't know Mark Walker, we got a little bio written up here. Uh, Mark's been living in Banff for eighteen years. First came here in two thousand and seven to teach skiing for Ski Big Threes Club Ski Program.
Nice.
By two thousand and ten, he joined the Fairmont Banff Springs where he helped develop what eventually became the Resort Activities Department. In two thousand and seventeen, he began working with Rent a Tent Canada, and by two thousand and twenty, he, him and his wife became part owners of the business. Together, they launched the Wilderness Equipment Rentals brand, which they continue to operate out of Canmore each summer. In the winter, Mark is still on the slopes, teaching skiing at Lake Louise and spending weekends skiing with his wife and his daughter. Uh, Mark is now running for Banff Town Council. His vision is for Banff to continue thriving as both a world-class travel destination and as a vibrant, livable community. He's passionate about protecting our natural surroundings while also making sure Banff remains affordable, accessible, and welcoming for people who call it home. He also brings leadership experience, serving as a public member and now Chair of the Banff Housing Corporation Board since April twenty twenty-four. His goal is to bring thoughtful leadership, clear communication, and sustainability-focused perspective to council, tackling today's challenges while planning responsibly for the future. Thank you so much for joining us.
Yeah, thanks. And, uh, just to tack on to that, yeah, I've got a website for the campaign.
Yes.
It is banffmarkwalker.com. Um, it's just got some information there about, you know, who I am and what I, what I stand for and, you know, my priorities and stuff. So that's a spot that people can check out. Yeah, and, uh, we're just ending the, ending our summer season at the rental business. It's been, uh, good. I mean, July was cold and wet.
Yeah, no doubt.
Uh, not really great for, you know, paddleboard rentals. Uh, but, you know, most of the people that are renting the camping packages that we rent, uh, they're booking in advance and coming out and doing their camping trips anyway. But August, yeah, August has been really nice and we're just wrapping up the rest of the month and then we go into, you know, pack things away and do the gear repairs and then wait for the snow.
Amazing.
Fun, fun, fun. So where are you from originally then?
I grew up in Ajax, Ontario. It's just a town just outside Toronto. It's still in that like.
Yeah.
Suburban sprawl of Toronto.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, you know, grew up, went to school there and everything. Um, after high school though, I traveled to New Zealand for a couple of years.
Cool.
Cause in high school, I was like, uh, you know, saw the Lord of the Rings, like we all did, I'm sure. And then, you know, during my whole like, what am I gonna do after high school thing? I found out that you can just go to New Zealand and like study adventure tourism. And I was like, wait a sec, that's, that's where they filmed that movie. That place really exists.
Yeah.
Uh, so I went there and I did study adventure tourism, uh, in a town called Nelson, which is north part of the South Island, like Able Tasman National Park and like beautiful sea kayaking and stuff.
Amazing.
And yeah, studied adventure tourism. Uh, I think I had one textbook and it was about clouds.
Awesome.
Yeah, I was, that was the only textbook. The rest of it was all practical skills and like out there kayaking and hiking and rafting and skiing and.
Cool.
Yeah, did that for two years, came back to Canada, uh, putted around Ontario, doing a few things. I was a raft guide there for a little bit. Uh, came out here though, uh, after kind of my first summer back home, thinking like, what do I want to do for the winter? Well, obviously I want to ski. No, didn't want to ski in Ontario.
Yeah, it's not the greatest conditions back home.
I'd been out here once for a vacation when I was like fourteen, fifteen. It was like, yeah, Banff seemed cool. Well, I checked that out and I found out about, uh, Club Ski, as you saw in the bio.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, and applied to work with them. You know, I had my level one instructor and they hired me for some reason and I came out and, you know, kept doing that for the next few winters, uh, sort of bouncing between, you know, the rafting in Ontario and the skiing out here in the winter.
Awesome. Oh, that's alright then.
And then, yeah, twenty ten, I sort of made the, the permanent change and I've been here ever since, so.
It's a pretty relatable start. I mean, lots of ski instructors come into Banff.
I mean, I wasn't instructing. I just came out here to ski, but, uh, you know, that goes.
I feel like the majority of the instructors that come now are from overseas. Maybe that's just.
Well, they do have, they have the ski school and stuff as well that they do, right? So.
Yeah, there's a lot of programs. Actually, that's what I do now. A lot of is teaching some of those, those, uh, like multi-week instructor courses.
Yeah, so teaching the teachers.
Yeah, the ones that come out here for the season, they want to learn how to become ski instructors. Some of them just come out and they do the course and that's their season and.
Yep.
They go back home and go back to, go back to life. But, I mean, that's the same as us. So many people come out here to work for a, for a season, you know, I would come out to ski and, you know, probably a big chunk of those people that come out for that season leave. But a piece of that, those ones that remain, they might do their like, oh, we'll stay for a full year, right? And then, then some of those leave. And then like, well, I'm gonna stay for a second season and then while some of those leave, until you sort of like whittle it down into the people that have been here eighteen years, so.
That's what happened to me. I like, I did the ski season. I'm like, I'll stick around for the summer, see what's up. And then, next thing you know, you're like, oh yeah, it's ski season again. And then it's summer and you get so busy in the summer. It's by the time you realize it, you're like, holy man, it's like ski season again. So you just.
Yeah. I just think there's so much out here to explore. Like there's no end to it. If you have the, you know, the right attitude and the right gear and knowledge, there's, there's nowhere you can't go really, right?
There's still a few runs I haven't done yet, a few hikes on my to-do list, so.
What is it about Banff that, uh, made you want to stay here long-term?
Well, I mean, it was, the mountains was a big part of it, right? Every time I was doing that drive back to Ontario, you know, and seeing the mountains in the rearview mirrors shrinking away, you know, and you get to like through Calgary and it's like, oh, they're gone. And now it's just the long, the long flat until you get to Ontario, right? And it was just sad. And every time I came back, you'd see those mountains approaching and feel excited again, right? So it was like, that was a big part of it initially. Eventually, when my wife, uh, came out and joined me before we, you know, way before we were married, um, she has a degree in theater and I've got my, my background in adventure tourism.
Cool.
She came and got a job working at the Banff Center, uh, which is, you know, huge center for the arts. And, you know, thinking about, okay, well, where can the two of us go where we have, you know, that kind of arts and culture and this kind of tourism, you know, adventure kind of, uh, opportunities in the same place.
That's kind of the perfect fit.
Right? Cause like both of our, our industries tend to be fairly seasonal or like for, you know, theater and the arts, uh, like gig-based, you kind of work for a show and then move on.
Yep.
Right? But working at the center, right? She could, uh, um, you know, have a full time. And that's what she still does. Actually, still, she still works there.
So very cool.
Yeah, it's just a place where we could both like be in our field. Um, and it's beautiful. It's like the perfect, uh, combination of, you know, nature and beauty and opportunity, I think, and.
True. I think, uh, a lot of locals are pretty quick to, especially this time of year, kind of, um, be on the more negative perception of the tourism market where like, that's if we're honest, it's the reason why we're here, right?
No doubt.
The prosperity of the Bow Valley is one that you don't find in all kind of ski adjacent towns, right? Like even back in the day when we had dead seasons where.
Yeah.
Businesses would close, right? It's pretty awesome that we don't have that anymore.
Yeah.
You know, the, you remember the old like closed for cleaning?
Yeah.
Sign that'd be up for like all of October.
Yep. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Lots of restaurants used to do that. Like I used to work, what was that? I was working somewhere downtown and it was, yeah, same thing. It's like, we're closed for three weeks, four weeks for renovations or like cleaning. And it's like, if you want a paycheck, come in and do some scrubbing in the kitchen for a couple of days, cause that's probably all you're gonna get. Like, it used to be pretty dead, man. Like October, November, like was just like a ghost town. And then through the years.
That's the town of Banff. That's why Banff Lake Louise Tourism, like, I don't know, entities that were pretty quick to condemn that have gotten us to where we are now, right?
No doubt.
We'll get to tourism in a little bit. Um, before I want to do, I want to talk a little bit about housing. Now you have some pretty interesting perspective on housing, of course. Give us a little bit of your kind of experience in the housing world of Bow Valley.
I mean, I've more in my first few years, I've kind of experienced all the different types of housing, right? Like came out here and, um, first of all, had to live in Canmore, right? My very, my very first season, you know, I came out here, I think I was in a hostel for a few nights and then realized that there's nowhere to live. So I ended up finding a basement in like Cougar Creek. And I lived there for my first season.
Yep.
Right? And I was commuting because I had a vehicle. So I could drive from Banff, or sorry, from Canmore into Banff, hop on our staff shuttle that we had for Club Ski in those days. And then go with the rest of the, you know, rest of my workers into, you know, whatever ski hill we're at that day and work, uh, then come back and then hop in the vehicle and go home to Canmore. Right? So I was doing that, like.
That's a long day.
Yeah. And, and, you know, when you're twenty-one, you know, you come home with your, your work buddies, you want to go hang out and have fun. And so you end up crashing on the couch or, you know, a lot of the times I just get in the car, go home, have a shower and be like, well, that's it. I'm just gonna sit here now and watch a movie or play a video game or something.
Yeah, exactly.
Right? So, you know, um, there's that. Then the next season I came out, immediately moved into staff housing.
Yep.
Right? So there was a, a unit up at the springs, you know, there, there.
Oh, yeah.
They had, they had a unit in the spring staff housing, so stayed there in a room with another person who I didn't know, didn't really get along with. So I was there for like a month or two, but then through my supervisor at work who babysat for some locals who owned a business who bought a house. They bought a house to provide staff housing for their summer employees.
Yeah.
Uh, so they had this place and now they wanted to rent it out. So through my supervisor's baby, you know, babysitting family.
Sweet.
Found a place. So again, just that network.
Yeah, that's how it kind of goes.
Build after your first year.
For sure.
So ended up, yeah, so renting my own private room in a multi-room, you know, flat sort of, sort of deal. Uh, lived there for, uh, two, you know, two seasons, uh, in a different room the second time because it was rented out to a different people. And then, then my wife came and joined me and she had her room and I had my room because we never lived together. And then after, you know, a few months of that, then we found our own place that we could rent together that was private, had a spare room for the family. We rented that for a couple of years. Uh, until we started looking into, okay, we'd like to maybe buy our own place. Um, we got a notification that a place in the Banff Housing Corporation is going up for sale. Uh, we'd put our names on the list. It's like fifty bucks, still only fifty bucks to put your name on the list.
Cool.
There, you have to, you know, you fill out some questionnaire and you, and you get assigned to points based on, you know, whether, how long you've lived there, if you have dependents, things like that. So you kind of get put in a prioritized list. Um, and we went to the open house. So we just heard about it. We went, there was one other couple and us at this open house.
No way.
This was two thousand and thirteen.
A little more relaxed back then.
A little bit. I mean, it was a bit slightly different situation. We're still like.
Technically still housing crisis back then, technically, so.
But it, it would just, the way it worked out, this, this place was going up for sale. There was an open house and the way it works, you show up for the open house and whoever shows up for the open house and, and expresses an interest in the order that you're on in the list, you get to make an offer.
Okay.
So the other couple that was there, they did the tour of the place as well, and they sort of looked at each other and they were like, no, it's not what we're looking for. Thanks. And then, so the guy in charge turned to us and said, you guys want to buy it? And, and we're like, we just came to see what kind of things were available in the housing corporation.
Getting a mortgage.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And so we, you know, we got our, we got our. It was, it was pretty intense, but we knew that this opportunity was, was like just luck, right? It just fell, fell in our lap. Extremely lucky. Uh, and we knew like, we were in the up, the position where we could have a down payment and, you know, get the mortgage and stuff. And we did. And then we were homeowners in the housing corporation. So we've, we've been in that same place since, uh, since then as well. So, you know, we've, I've kind of been through a lot of the different.
Exactly, right? So from staff comm to, from hostel to staff comm.
Yeah.
To renting, to buying through the housing corporation.
Yeah. And I spoke to this during the public hearing when they were doing the, um, housing, like the residential bylaw, land use changes.
Right.
And I, and I was speaking to the point that I'm only in the situation that I'm in because I was lucky. It's the only reason we've, probably even managed to stay here, right? And the fact that we have, you know, our own place, stable housing, you know, that gives you the stability to then, you know, have a dog and have a kid, right?
Right.
So all of these things have come from the fact that I've just been incredibly lucky with my housing situation. And that's what's kind of driven me, way back to your point, driven me to really be interested in the housing situation we have here in town because I would love to have a, a point in time where if you, if you want that sort of life here, you don't have to be extremely lucky.
That's a great point.
Like it's, it's available. If you want to do it, you can. Not just, you want to do it, you might, if you're, you rolled the dice, you know?
No kidding.
So anyway, that's, that's why it fascinates me so much. So, you know, I, I stay, you know, I kind of follow the, you know, what the rental rates are, what the homeownership, you know, prices are looking like. I've just seen it grow.
Never goes down.
Nowadays, you look and you see the things on, you know, Facebook, on Home Finder pages or whatever, and you're seeing rooms that are going for twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, two thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
Dollars for a room above, yeah, above. You have people laugh, react on those. But like, yeah, above two thousand dollars. My first room that I rented in Canmore was five hundred bucks a month.
Yeah. When I moved into Northwoods, that would have been twenty thirteen, fourteen, I came out here. I was there for like eleven years and I moved in, I think it was seven eighty for a two-bedroom.
That's crazy.
And when I left, it was twenty-two.
Yeah.
Like ten years later. So it's like more than doubled, right? And it's like.
Yeah. So as much, as much as it was a challenge for us, right? Imagine the challenge for those people that are right now, right? That this, this is their first season and they want to try to make a, a long-term go of it. So.
It's crazy. Well, it's a big part of why we do the show too, is kind of giving perspective for people that maybe haven't been here as long as we have, just on how to get by and how to navigate the Bow Valley, because it's not super easy if no one's telling you.
Yeah. I mean, the, I think the, the, the way to do it though, is still just networking. You gotta.
For sure.
Put yourself out there.
The only way you're gonna find a place, like.
Yeah.
It's like, I got this place, like I've only got.
Don't be shy to ask.
Another couple of months here and I gotta start doing the networking thing again, so I can get out of here by December. But, uh, yeah, it's, you know, buddy had a place. He's like, man, just rent a room here for a few months until you find something bingo bango.
And the next one you find will probably be, a buddy of yours knows somebody that's moving out or their roommate's leaving and then you just whoop, in you go.
Yeah, same thing, but.
Timing is right.
Yeah.
I don't know if you checked in with our episode last week, but we were talking with the mayor and she presented a pretty lofty goal of ending the housing crisis by twenty forty. How would you see us accomplishing this goal?
Yeah, I mean, the, you know, the housing assessment right now is that we're somewhere between seven hundred and a thousand units shy of what we need to kind of have a healthy housing situation.
That's wild. The last one I heard was less than that. So that seems like a big number to me.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's the, the looking down the road. Like that's, that's where they're.
If we're like in twenty forty, I guess.
Right? Is like, that's how many units we could be short if we didn't do anything, right? I, I think it, it's attainable. We could do it. Um, the changes that have already been made to the land use bylaw around housing.
Right.
Is making a, a difference in, on, on housing. I know that there's, that there's other issues around that, especially with parking. Um, but it is making a difference on housing, right? There are new developments that are being put in. There's people putting in more units. There's people redeveloping their properties. Uh, there's people putting in accessory dwellings or, you know, legal suites. So it is having an effect. So that's great. The development that's going in, um, on Wolf Street, the one that's been called Fifty Wolf.
Fifty Wolf.
I think it's gonna, yeah, it's like Thirty Rock or like.
Yeah.
I've, you know, and the discussions we've been having on the Banff Housing Corporation Board, I've been trying to call it Dockside.
Dockside.
Yeah, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the people that might be listening.
Where does that come from?
Have been calling it Fifty Wolf and not Dockside. I don't know. I just figured it was.
The mayor was saying like, we need a name for it.
There's gonna be, I'm sure there's gonna be like an actual naming convention and like, they're gonna want to have, you know, consultations on, you know, indigenous, because they're trying to, you know, name more things, uh, along that line, like Tinu and stuff, but.
Absolutely.
You know, but in, in the meantime, just the placeholder that, that's what I've been using. Anyway, but that's gonna add another ninety homes, potentially that one development.
Sweet.
You know, the Aster, which, you know, is a couple of years old now, but that was, you know, another thirty odd units. Um, uh, when, uh, Tinu was built as well.
Oh, right, right.
That also added a whole bunch of rental units that are managed by the town, which is great because it's not, you know, on the market. It's, you know, kind of, um, you know, housing corporation managed rental units. So like there's potential for, for more of that. There are other parcels of land that we can investigate, right? There's a big chunk, um, at the end of town, past the canoe, the, and I still call it the ends of Banff.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
Oh, right.
Canoe Hotel. Anyway, past that, sort of on the lower end of the, they're like calling it Totanga Three, because there's Totanga One and Two, but it's sort of out there on that, that sort of side hill bit of, uh, Tonne Mountain.
Interesting.
But that's a, like a large area potentially. And if they built with some density, it could have more housing units than Middle Springs.
Wow.
Right? But there's, there's some access issues. It's gonna be a little more challenging to develop on the hillside. Um, you know, there needs to be more work and discussion. That's why that wasn't the project that was kind of moved ahead with first.
Yeah.
Uh, cause like the, the Housing Accelerator Fund, um, there was sort of a timeline on that and that development probably wouldn't be in there, but it is something we can look at and work on, because there's potential there. Yeah, but if we, I mean, ninety units just from Dockside, Fifty Wolf, uh, whatever, um, you know, in a year, that's pretty good.
For sure.
We're fifteen years out, you know, from twenty forty.
Yeah.
If we add ninety units a year, I mean, I think the math maths that we would get to that.
It's pretty close.
But, um, you know, not every year is gonna be adding a new ninety unit development, but between that and however many units are being built on the market, right? Through people redeveloping. It could, it could happen. As long as we like maintain that focus though, I think.
For sure. And I think it's a big focus in the town plan moving forward is the housing, obviously, right? Like eventually you won't have people to clean the dishes or to make the beds if there's no place for them to stay, right? Um, and again, it's, it's a question that's always on everyone's mind. You're involved in a lot of these conversations, obviously face to face. We were talking earlier, had a little meeting this morning, meeting people, shaking hands, doing all that campaign stuff, but you're also involved in a lot of conversations online with people about all different topics, but for housing specifically, what do you think is the biggest misconception from the general towns person? Cause we see some pretty wild takes.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think most people realize that, you know, we're in a national park. Um, we can't just build new housing development. I think a lot of people know why there's a housing issue. You sometimes see things, um, you know, about, uh, implementing rent controls, uh, how the town should do that. Well, it's, you know, there's some things the town just can't do, don't have.
Jurisdictionally, I think is, yeah, the hugest misconception for sure.
I mean, in affecting prices over whether it's, you know, housing for sale or housing for rent, it comes down to supply and demand, right? And the, the demand is people that need to work and live here. Fortunately, that's, you know, helped by things like the need to reside. You know, that if without that, can you just imagine where we'd be?
Oh, it'd be, it'd be a free-for-all, man.
It's true, but like there has been, you know, we have raised questions before about managing the demand as well, right? And like allowing retail stores to be turned into restaurants where that workforce is, you know, two, three times the size. That is something that the town is directly involved in, right?
Yeah, I mean, whenever a business does that, they do have to go through a, a development permit process, right? They have to apply to change use from one to the other. There is an element of that process that considers staffing requirements and housing requirements for those staff. Uh, in the past, um, businesses have then either had to provide housing for those staff or they've had to contribute money into the, um, like money in lieu of housing, essentially.
Like a penalty, I think, kind of, but it was supposed to go towards housing.
Yeah, yeah. But, um, the focus now is more on that providing housing, which is why you sometimes now see some of these places that get bought up and turned into, you know, from just a, a rental available for anybody to like staff housing.
Yeah.
Right? Which is, which can be an issue as well.
For sure.
Yeah, because it doesn't necessarily add the housing we need.
Well, that's it, right? Like that adds a temporary contracts home or temporary workers home where I think long-term, like how many people are doing staff comm long-term?
One of my buddies, uh, was actually one of our coworkers. He works for another company in town. I can't even remember where he works, but they have a one-year maximum on their staff housing. So it's like.
Interesting.
Even if you get staff accommodation, you've only got a year to find a place and sort it out, save up some cash and move in, right? Like, which is just wild to me that. I mean, I get it if you've got new staff coming in that need housing, but like, what about your already tenured staff that are literally making you a bunch of money a year, right? Like.
You kept them for a reason, right?
Yeah, like. Well, and the people that, the people that have stayed in their staff housing for many years, they've worked with the same employer.
Right.
Might not want to live in that housing for their whole life.
Or if they're trying to have a family.
Yeah. They might be entering different parts of their life where they want their own place. They want privacy and, you know, I call it appropriate housing, right? Cause everybody should be housed appropriately. And for some people that living in a, in a flat with some roommates is great. That's appropriate for them. Right? And for other people, you know, maybe they, yeah, well, you do, it's not appropriate necessarily. I'm not gonna judge if somebody wants to, but to be living in a house with, you know, a bunch of roommates and kids and, you know, you might want that bit of privacy and.
Well, even for myself, like my roommate and I are both in our early forties. It's like, you know, like kind of over having roommates after, you know, twenty years renting with homies or staff housing or, you know, like shared housing when there's ten of you in, like. I mean, we're great friends. We get along great, but it's, at the end of the day, we're both just like, oh man, it's like that time in, in your life when it's like, you just need your own space, you know what I mean? And it's.
I think you don't really have a choice as a single aging man than to have roommates, like especially in the town of Banff or Canmore, there's really no other option.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's why, you know, when, uh, things like the Aster were being built, there was a big focus on like one and two bedroom, you know, units for sale, smaller units, but maybe appropriate for those people that want to stay in town, move out of their rental situation with their roommates or move into, you know, something that's theirs. You know, you don't have that, that ax hanging over your head of, I could be told at any point that I've got my notice and I have to leave.
Yep.
Right?
Again, smaller units is gonna have to be the reality when you're talking about the Banff National Park, right? Like our hands are kind of tied as far as space and to increase density, you have to decrease the size. It's.
Yeah.
It's gotta be a give and take, right?
You have to make up the space somewhere, right? That's why some of those land use bylaw changes came into effect, like different, you know, like. You have to make up the space somewhere, right? That's why some of those land use by law changes came into effect, like different, you know, like uh, floor area ratios on your property and stuff, but.
Those were quick to be painted out in a pretty conspiratorial way because like some people are like, you gotta ask about like the land use, you know, like they're switching it up for development, which, you know, last week.
Yeah, but it's not like. It's not like, they're not redeveloping that commercial, you know what I mean? It's like, this is like pretty housing specific, right?
Well, the, yeah, I mean, the, the town only has certain avenues for creating housing. They can just do it themselves directly. With things like Tina, the Aster, uh, Dockside. You know, that's where the town, you know, gets the property, hires the developer, the town makes it, you know, it ends up being managed by the housing corporation. But that's one way, but that money's gonna come from somewhere, right? A lot of the time it's grant money and, you know, from selling the units off, you know, that helps pay for the ones that are rental units or whatever. But then the other thing the town can do is just change the rules so that people will take their own money and build housing. That's why it didn't happen for so long, right? Just because there was no financial incentive.
This almost disincentive, yeah.
Right? Or it was, it was too costly, right? Because the, we, we, parking is the big thing. It's always like well, if we build more housing, more density, we need more parking for those people. It's like, well, there's has to be the trade somewhere.
Right.
Right? Um, not everyone wants or needs a vehicle.
We need to mandate underground parking.
The, the challenge with that is it then becomes expensive to build the housing units, right? Because one underground parking space can increase the cost. It's, I forget the number, but it's in the tens of thousands.
We've been through numbers of, of the low ground park, but I feel like that's the way to go. Like the cost shouldn't be.
And in, in some places maybe, but in other places, we've got six inches of topsoil and then it's mountain beneath us. We're not sitting on all this soil and dirt that's easy to move, right? So it's the cost of building underground parking in Banff specifically is more than you would see maybe in other communities too. So.
Fair point.
There's a cost. It's kind of compounds that cost thing. And then you're building housing and selling it or renting it at rates that are again, we're dealing with the affordability thing, so. Anyway. I mean, yeah, change, yeah, sorry, changing the rules then, right? The land use stuff, allowing for, allowing for more density, allowing for taller builds like because we can't go out and we shouldn't, we shouldn't be looking at, you know, parcels of land outside the town and growing and expanding the town because that's not what we want to do in the national park.
No doubt.
So we have to focus inside our borders, right? And say, we have to find solutions here, so.
So what would be your top housing priorities if you were elected to council?
I mean, uh, the, the Banff Community Plan, which actually right now as we speak is being read, third, third reading, yeah, right now in council. The, the community plan, I think it's section four point two is the places to live or something. It's the housing related piece of the plan. It's really ambitious. Uh, I think it sets a lot of uh, really interesting long-term goals uh, where we can end up. Yeah, it uh, suggests one thing, which was advocating uh, for policies that strengthen tenant protection. Which I think is a really cool idea because we've all heard the stories of, you know, the, the landlord that doesn't look after the place and it doesn't follow the rules or that takes you deposit or, you know, the horror stories of.
I've seen them all.
Deal, yeah.
I've seen them all, yeah.
And there's lots of great landlords too, right? I've had some as well myself, but uh, you know, there, there are areas where we could, you know, the, the Banff Community Plan suggests advocating for policies. I would maybe even take that a step further and see, is there something we can do in the town to provide that resource to help people with that poss- process? Uh, the last time I ran for council, one of my platforms was to like create some kind of body or program or some like a gold star, you know, if you meet these criteria as a landlord, you get a, you get a nice shiny sticker from the rental.
Association or something.
That just says that, yeah, you've, you've been following these guidelines and rules. Um, you're recommended by us. You know, and like that kind of thing would give landlords the, you know, the pick really of the, the tenants, right? They're gonna get more, more applications, gives them the opportunity to find better tenants. So if we compare, you know, good landlords and good tenants, great. And if it encourages more landlords to do things, maybe maintain the place better, provide more living space or whatever the thing is.
Not have fifty people in bunk beds in one unit.
Yeah, I mean, that, that probably falls under some other, some other rules around like health and, you know, whatever, but um, you know, I thought that would be, would be an interesting idea. Yeah, investigating what we need to do to uh, build that Totanga three area, which is in the town boundary. It is already zoned for residential. It just never was developed because of various challenges, but um, it's, it's available. It's there, so.
Is that, is that the one that's like just passing into Banff, like where the hydro lines are there?
Through canoe, their property. I think that's the access pieces that some of the road to get there. It's either like behind and it's too narrow or steeper or something or part of it's.
Yeah, because the only other access would be up on like Tunnel Mountain behind the resort.
And there's already, yeah, stuff up there. There's no road access. So there has to be some kind of access uh, issues dealt with, but and that might involve maybe a road that's outside of the town boundary just to get to that piece, but that's a, you know, parks discussion, whatever, but. Anyway, that, that's an area that we have available.
I didn't even know that existed.
It was, it was when we were going through, I guess, the, the town was going through the process of looking at some of these places to infill, right? Some of these pockets of, you know, we can kind of rezone a little bit and fit another development, you know? Especially for the, for the Housing Accelerator Fund where that money is available from the federal government, so. Yeah, so they kind of were looking at some of those areas again. Another one was like the end of Cave Avenue right near the Springs, the, the Hot Springs. There's a spot there, but geologically, like the engineers were just like, you. You, you could build there, but it would not be affordable just because the amount of work that needs to be done to stabilize slope side and water, water flows and stuff. So there's a few spots, but um, there's a couple of empty lots in town. Like I'm like, you know, going on my bike rides through town, you're like, that, that, that's a space between some houses. There's nothing there. Why? Are people just sitting on the land and not developing it? Or the, I don't, I don't know, but we, we have that space. There should be people living there. It's residentially zoned.
Wow. Can, is there a way that, I don't know, like you can't force someone to develop their property if they own it or if they, right?
Yeah, if it's their, if it's their lease and that's what they want to do with it.
Could that maybe be something implemented that like if you have something sitting open for so long that I mean, you, you face a monetary penalty.
It's already been suggested as a solution to try to incentivize the development of those spaces, right? Either through you know, either tax incentives or penalties or, you know, something through utilities, like there's only a few tools that the town has that they should manipulate that, but you know, I would, I, I would look at it either way, like, hey, look, you have this parcel, you haven't developed it. Maybe there's something we can offer to help.
Yeah.
Get it developed.
There you go.
Right? Can we, can we help in any way? Just to get something going because, you know, some of those lots are on now higher density, you know, areas. You can put like a couple of units in there, so.
Interesting.
Yeah. There's one really big property that's been sale for, for sale for a couple of years too on uh, between Beaver and Muskrat Street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think I know what you're talking about. It's huge. Yeah, I know. Yeah, it's crazy.
If you, if you look at Google Maps and you look at like the last block of Muskrat Street between Muskrat and Beaver and you zoom in, you like start zooming in. You realize it's like houses, 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 lots of trees with one big house. Right there. It's on, it's on like six or eight lots or something.
But again, like you can't, you can't force people to sell their.
No, but I think it's for sale.
Oh, it's true.
Right? Maybe we can get a group of businesses together. Or maybe the town gets involved, helps coordinate and says, hey, you know what? There's this property for sale. We could buy it. That could house a lot of people on that parcel of land. Maybe businesses want to buy in and will build a you know, a co-op, kind of like the one that's down at the rec grounds. Something where like you've contributed, you get some staff housing, you know, you apply for certain times of year, you need your staff housing. It can be managed for you.
Fair enough, yeah.
There's potential, so.
All great solutions, honestly, like.
No doubt.
I've thought a lot about.
Great. And honestly, with your, with your experience in the housing market, that's kind of the big thing that I wanted to pick your brain on. And already bringing up solutions that we haven't quite thought of yet.
And everything costs money, though.
So that's it. That's the biggest thing, though, like everything that we've suggested has always come with the, that's too costly, that's too costly. It's like at one point.
It's not too costly.
That's what I mean.
It's, if it is costly, okay, where does the money come from? Where could it come from? I'd heard you guys talk before about like, you know, we have visitors coming here all the time, billions of dollars that flow through the Bow Valley. You know, there, there is money. How can we, how can we get the money for the things that we need?
Funnel it to the right places, I think is kind of more the, should be the focus.
And then, and those sort of public-private partnerships, it could be a way to do it. Maybe it doesn't have to be just the, the, you know, private developers or the town. Maybe both.
A little more collaboration on that front might uh.
That could help.
Might grease the wheels.
Little, little live internet meme of, why not both?
Let's move on to wildfire preparedness. Do you feel we've done enough as a town? I mean, after Jasper last year raised a bunch of questions.
Yeah, I mean, those sort of events are going to make people worried and fearful of what could happen here. There's always the, the hindsight, did they do enough there? Are we doing enough here? Right? The one thing that, that has done is I think it has raised a lot of awareness.
Oh, for sure.
Before last year, I don't think there was a, I, I don't think I've heard of people putting sprinklers on their roof.
Never.
Yeah, I know, that's wild, yeah.
Now, like every house on my street, like we've all, all the neighbors, we've been outside, we've been standing there on the driveways, looking up at our, at our roof sprinklers as we get them all installed and tested and and, uh, you know, the town did a lot for, for uh, offering those roof sprinkler kits for people. They like covered a lot of the cost of that. You know, that's, that's a big visible thing. It's, it's showing too that people are taking it seriously, right? There's been a lot of like fire smarting around people's homes. I remember this, you know, spring and summer, you know, we cleared a few older trees that were on our property that the fire smart, you know, assessment said should be removed. Um, other neighbors did the same. There was a day when the town like dropped off a big bin and said, yeah, you can take all your, your tree waste and, and stuff and drop it here and just seeing people like dragging. I, I dragged a sled. I, I just brought the old sled and like threw a bunch of like pine boughs on. I was dragging the sled down the street. And then like threw it all in the, threw it all in the bin and, you know, so people are, people are taking it seriously. You know, the fact that the fire smart program is out there, you know, people can get their houses checked. Get some suggestions on what to do because it's, it really makes a big difference. Like I think now seeing stuff like Jasper, we realize the difference between you know, like some of those communities, the fire comes through and it's like rubble, rubble, house, rubble, rubble, you know, and that one house is standing. You know, and it's sometimes like, oh, the, you know, the fire just takes what it wants to take. And, but sometimes it's actually no, like there, there's actual factors that go into, you know, is your house more at risk? Because of, you know, what's your roof made of? Your gutter's full of pine needles. You have piles of firewood and old jerry cans of gasoline under your deck. You know, like a lot of those things make a huge difference because it's that ember, the rain of embers and stuff that, you know, if they land on nothing flammable, they just go out. But if they land on a pile of tinder, that catches and then goes to your house.
I think there's a, I don't know, I feel like there's always been like a little bit of like naivety about just we're in the town site, like there's no way that anything could happen here. Like, you know, they're taking care of it. And then you see Jasper last year and you're like, holy shit.
I am absolutely guilty of that.
Oh, for sure. It's like, I don't know, you never really think about it just because you're in town. You're like, oh, like how's the whole town gonna burn down?
I've literally said in the past, oh, that won't happen. Canada will send the water bombers. They will, they will go all out. They'll, you know, they will, you know, pull every stop sign, no expense spared to, to, but like, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, it takes time. Like, it, it takes time to get even that organized and then like, who knows?
And even our best efforts as humans are no match for nature, right? If we get a hot, dry summer and the right conditions and like three different lightning strike fires and then like and Jasper, you know, there's nothing, even with the best efforts of the people, a lot of, a lot of the town was saved, right? Because of the efforts of the people up there, but you know, it's, nature's powerful. So I think, I think the, the focus that's given us on the problem uh, is beneficial for sure.
Big time.
It's uh, it was a scary, like I had buddies that, that were up there when it was going on and they're just like, dude, it's like wild out there. You don't understand until you like, you know, somebody that's gone through that or you see it like firsthand, you're like, man, I've walked down that street and gone to most of those businesses that are now just gone.
Well, I don't think a lot of people realize that the fire that was last weekend or during Harvest Fest, the Sunday of Harvest Fest, there was a fire at Moose Meadows, which is only like forty kilometers away from town. But that area had already been, there already had already been some prescribed burns there, so it didn't.
Well, thankfully, that's what it happened. Could that have been wor- like, that, that's the, that's the thing. It's like, well, what would it have done? You, you never know, but.
But I think it's like, it's a very thin line between like scaring the public in these things because like forty kilometers is not that far for a fire. So like, it, it could have been much worse than it was. Like work had been done there, right?
I saw the helicopters with the uh, the water buckets taking off like one after another out here. I was out having a cigarette, which is probably a weird thing to do while there's something on fire. But anyways, I just, I watched like three of them.
Out responsibly.
Yeah, I saw like three of them come by, like just taking off from uh, in the compound here. And it was like.
Yeah, I mean, it's a hard thing to say, oh, you know, that one went out because they did prescribe burning. Right, maybe, maybe, maybe it helped. Maybe it was a lot, but I can't imagine it would have been better if they hadn't had prescribed burning in there before. You know, so hopefully all these things, you know, line up to protect us from wildfire.
Safe, yeah.
Yeah.
What more do you think we could be doing?
I, I mean, the, the programs we've already been mentioning, right? The sprinkler program is great. The fire smarting program is super important. Right? Everybody should get their home fire smarted. Which is just an assessment, like the, the experts come by, they look at your place and say, yeah, great, this is what you should do. And, and yeah, it's not, it's not a have to do thing. It's a, um, you know, we've looked around and like this type of tree or here, you know, this tree's a little bit close to your property. You'd be a little bit safer if, you know, remove that and place this different kind of tree over there. You don't have to do any of it. Right? But, you know, it gives you some food for thought, certainly unlike, you know what? It, it really is not gonna hurt me to clean up that pile of wood that's leaning up against my house. Maybe just getting rid of that. You know, that, that might be a first step. Or, you know, for people that own properties, getting uh, roofs, you know, reshaping, you know, different shingles, removing types or siding types, you know? Those are all decisions you have to kind of make. May, you know, maybe insurance, you know, there's implications there or who knows, but.
Fair enough, fair enough. I think we're on the right path. I think we stick to it.
Yeah.
Where we'll have some good outcomes, hopefully. Let's skip to traffic a little bit. Uh, some people say we're at a tipping point here in Banff in the summer months. What are your thoughts on that situation?
Yeah, um.
Talk about traffic. That's the first, first one of uh, page three.
Oh, I spaced on my questions at more side. Yeah, I mean, I remember before we had Rome Transit, right? When I first got here, there was no, there were no buses. Right? We didn't have scramble crossings. We didn't have, you know, there, there's all, all these things that we, we have now and kind of, you know, take for granted we didn't have and some of the worst traffic. So even when I, you know, because we bought that house up there uh, in, in Middle Springs uh, and I keep forgetting the year, but I think it was twenty thirteen. And it was those first few years, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, where those were some of the worst days. Where the traffic coming down the hill at like
Oh, yeah.
Three to five o'clock.
Oh, you couldn't get home like.
Yeah, yeah, like, you know, we, we're, we're going Jasper way. So you get out to the end of Glacier there and it's like the lineup coming from down the hills, like past Glacier, past Middle Springs Drive and wrapping around the corner up towards the Hot Spring. Right? That was then, right? We had fewer cars in town then. Than we do now. But with changes to things like, like having bus transit, first of all, uh, great. Things like the intercept parking lot, awesome. There were smaller things around like the scramble crossings and light timing that they're able to do. We haven't seen quite that bad since, since those days. Until a little bit more recently, we can start to see it creeping back up now as we're getting those more vehicle numbers, right? So, you know, we, we did a good job with some of those things, but we're, we're still dealing with more and more visitors, more and more cars, so. Yeah, I mean, there's uh, the train state, we're gonna talk about the train station ARP in a bit, but that proposes to build more parking out on the edge of town.
Slippery slope, in my opinion, but.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we'll get to that one in a sec, but like, um, the, like Parks Canada has their own intercept parking lot as well. Right? You know, you're coming in from Canmore and you see the uh, Parko Boos.
Yeah, yeah.
The uh, you know, the, the parking ride.
Yeah, parking bus.
They just call it Parko Boos.
Parko Boos.
Yeah, just like as you're heading towards uh, like Johnson Lake on the right hand side. So they have that big parking lot there. Could we use that more? Could, you know, we direct more traffic there because you can park and then take the bus into town or up to Minnewanka. That's another piece that I think is a little underused. I've never gone by and seen it full of cars. Maybe it is a time.
It's usually just people kind of hiking, like cascade waterfalls, stuff like that. It's usually just people kind of hiking, like cascade waterfalls, stuff like that. It's, it's parked at, like I've, I've only ever seen.
That's, that's not the parkable booth, like when you get off the highway and it's on the left.
Okay.
That like by the airfield.
Oh, yeah.
That's just, that's just there for that, like cascade thing. If you, if you go past that, make a right.
Yeah, okay.
And it's also where they do like the, the boat inspection.
Yeah.
The boat inspection and the parka boost.
There used to be campsites there.
It used to be an overflow campground a while ago. Hasn't been, hasn't been for a long time.
But yeah, that's a good option. Like you don't see too many people at that boat inspection place.
Yeah, I mean, that's already there and then Park seems to want people to use it too. So great, let's, let's use that. Yeah, and the, I like, I live here, my shop is in Canmore in the summer. So I'm doing the reverse commute, you know, I go from here to Canmore and work there for the day.
Friday evenings trying to get home.
Yeah, right? So, um, you know, when I leave for work in the morning, road's pretty empty.
Yeah, for sure. Going that way.
Right? Like you go, you go down to the market or like even on the, on the weekend, we, you know, go to the library. We take our kid down there. There's plenty of parking, right? Right downtown Central Park, right across from the library. You know, you go inside for, for story time or whatever, and you go in, there's, it's plenty of parking. It's when you come out, you know, at like eleven, eleven thirty. Now, all of a sudden, everybody is jockeying to parallel park in those spots and the lineups of the intersections are big. So we're, we, we do have times when things are busy, right? From that like eleven or twelve to five, six, sometimes seven or eight, maybe in the evenings in the summer.
Sometimes later.
Some, sometimes. But those are like the peak busy times. So are there, you know, are there days when we have too many people or other times when we have too many people? Uh, are there places we have too many people? Because, you know, even while it's busy, maybe here, um, Minnewanka, Johnston Canyon, you know, some of the highlights, right? If you go park in, you know, Taylor Lake and go do a Taylor Lake hike.
Yeah.
Or Boom Lake.
Oh, yeah, there's nobody there. I did Boom Lake and we saw one person the whole day. And I would, we fished out there for like six hours. It was wild, yeah.
Stanley Glacier.
Yeah, good point.
Marble Canyon. I get, I get guests come to me all the time and they're asking for, you know, simple hike recommendations. And they're like, we're thinking Johnston Canyon, like Louise, I'm like, okay.
Maybe not.
People go to them because they're really nice. I tell them what to expect, right? If you're going to Johnston Canyon, you know, middle of the day, Saturday in July. Okay, I mean, you're going to be waiting in line. You're going to follow the line from the trailhead to the waterfall. You're going to see a pretty waterfall and follow the people back.
Yeah.
If that's what you want, fine. You, you want to know some other cool spots? And then I'll tell them, you know, some other places that it probably won't be as busy. You might get a similar experience. But that's just helping, you know, we're either managing their expectations. If they want to go to those places with all those people, fine, like, you know, as long as they're able to handle them, uh, which is another, you know, part of that discussion. But there's other, there's other places.
So should we just expect traffic in the town of Banff or should we, should we mitigate it?
Yeah, we, I mean, we absolutely need to find more ways to, to help people get out of their cars.
Yeah.
Right? I, I think there's a lot of, you know, arguments to the fact that like, if you build it, they will come.
Of course.
Right? If you build more parking, we're going to get more cars.
Yeah.
Yeah, fair enough.
Maybe there might be an element of that, but those people are probably coming anyway.
Yeah.
And either we're going to help them get out of their cars or leave their cars in places where they're not causing traffic issues. Or we're not, and we're going to be plugging our streets and having to close things because of safety issues, right? But, you know, maybe there's creative solutions around. And I heard somebody say that, you know, out by Highway twenty two, you know, there's the, it's the A and W, the Petro Canada.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Out there where everybody parks.
Yes.
You know, because they're living in Cochrane and they're carpooling into the mountains.
Yeah.
There's a lot of space there.
There is.
I mean, maybe that's a space. If people are parking their cars anyway, we could give them a safe place to park, you know, with lighting and like level surfaces and they're not.
I've mentioned Stoney Dakota before, like Stoney Dakota.
If they're up for it.
That's what I mean, like. Like increased visitation, intercept people outside of the park boundary. I think that was Harvey's big idea was like, let's not pave more parking in the Banff National Park. Let's pave the parking outside and then use public transit to move them in.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, there's the, the, the big casino already has facilities and services. If that's what they want to do, I, I'm never one to say, hey, this is what you guys should do with your land, right? It's theirs. And if they want to be involved in that kind of solution, cool, I'm sure we can work with them to, to do that. But even outside the reserve, right? Closer to Calgary, there's, there's, there's potentially space. There is still, maybe not for much longer, but there is empty space between the edge of the reserve and Calgary, right? That's slowly filling in.
Yep.
Like you go out to Springbank now.
Oh, yeah.
There's development there on the edge of the city. But even on the edge of the city, if it's city people that are coming here, maybe the city of Calgary wants to get in on something. Maybe they can build some kind of parking bus solution. I mean, there's already regional bussing, but there's potential for more.
Where would they go spending money to get people out of the city?
I mean, it's people that are going anyway and
It's true.
You know, it's their residents.
Yeah.
A lot of the time.
Ease of use.
A big, a big thing is, is, uh, just how big Calgary's gotten, right? How many people are there?
Doubled, right?
Not just Calgary, Reddy Edmonton as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everything.
Cochrane, even like this, everybody's building, it's getting bigger. So it's, yeah, makes sense that more people are going to come out for the weekend or for a day trip. You know what I mean? Like, you know, and it's, and it's either we have to say, no, you can't, which seems kind of antithetical to the idea of a natural, a national park.
Big time, big time.
Right? It's like, this is the national park that is here for Canadians, come out and see it. You know, we can either say, no, sorry.
Which is against our ethos, really.
You know, or we can say, okay, yes, but right? But you have to leave your car in the city.
Yeah.
Yes, but there's maybe a train. I know train is a controversial topic, but if we say, okay, we're going to maybe get rid of some of the parking we already have here.
Yeah.
Because there's a train, right? There's another way for you to leave your vehicle somewhere else, to come out here in a way that's maybe more environmentally friendly. Again, arguments around whether it is or not, um, but it's at least a way that, you know, mass transit typically is a little more efficient for moving people.
Right.
And especially when it comes to talking about traffic, right? We can get them out here without their vehicles, great, like.
Less traffic in town, just at the source, right?
Yeah. I, I would love to see solutions where we can win on all fronts, right? Where ideally it's good for the environment, right? Fewer vehicles, less fossil fuel, right? Where it's allowing people to still come out here, right? It's getting people, you know, to, you know, be able to take those means of transportation to get them where they want to go, right? If there's a way to take a train from the city, get off at the train station, hop on a bus to the place you want to go to. If there are those interconnected, I think I mentioned, I put on one of these answers, interconnect, oh, interconnectivity. That's the one we're talking about now.
Yeah.
But if there's, if there's a way for you to easily and seamlessly go from this to that, to where I want to go.
For sure.
And then from that place, I want to go to the next place I want to go and then home, right? Like we have, we have incredibly intelligent machines in our pockets, most of us, right? That if I say, I want to go here, great, here's how to do it, get on this thing.
Well, with the shuttles to the lakes and.
Well, I don't think it's the international tourists that would have a problem with using this type of system. I think it's the local, the day visitors that are more opposed to using public transit. Because who wants to leave their car, right?
Well, like.
Who wants to work on someone else's schedule?
Like you've said previously, what if you got like two kids, two strollers, a bunch of crap? Like the chances you wanted to take a bus from, you know, even Cochrane to.
You have to, you have to design transit that is accommodating to those people then, right? You need space for bikes, you need space for strollers, right? You need
On the public transit.
Kids section on the, maybe you have a ball pit on the train. I just came up with that right now.
That's a good idea.
Train ball pit.
Think tank, that's why we do these things.
Anyway, but you know what I mean? There needs to, there needs to be, you know, that in mind in the design of these things, that those people can be accommodated. Or you say, it is still an option. If you want to drive and bring your family and park here, here's where you are going to park because it is your only option and it's going to cost you this much.
Yeah, fair enough.
Because there is a cost to having that privilege, I suppose, like.
Well, it's like driving downtown Toronto, like you're going to pay tolls fifty bucks a day to park your car downtown. It's like, if that's what you want to do, go ahead, but there's lots of other ways to get around, man, like.
You pay for convenience.
Yeah, you could, you could pay three bucks and.
And so all these ideas aren't, I, I don't think these ideas are the same as saying, we're going to cap the number of cars. It might end up effectively reducing the number of vehicles or, or capping the number of vehicles. But the focus is not on, there is a cap, we will not, we will shut the doors and lock you out. The, the focus is on what are we doing, right? What things are we doing to manage the people to accomplish the, the real goals we want? Which is, well, I'm not going to be sitting at the entrance of town being like twenty three thousand nine hundred ninety nine, twenty four thousand. Oh, man, now I'm mad.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's, could I get to where I needed to go, right? Did it take me forever to get through town? Does it feel like I have a little bit of breathing room? Is there space for me in the places I want to be, right? If we can accomplish those, I don't think the cap is as important.
Well, I think that's a good point that maybe we can achieve that cap without calling it a cap. Like there's, that's, that's, that's a great tactic to maybe approach the problem.
There's a really, there's a really cool name for that.
Yeah.
Human use management.
No doubt.
Yeah.
I like it.
I think that's something that you're going to hear a lot, probably going forward. It's one of the things that's coming out of the Banff Community Plan right now. It's actually what I was just meeting with somebody about this morning.
Cool.
I was finding a little bit more about what that is. And it really is an approach that, um, considers like what really are the, the core problems? And what are, what are the outcomes we actually want to achieve, right? And looking at kind of that holistic.
Like a reverse engineering your problem, right?
Yeah, right? Rather than saying, well, the problem is too busy, we need to make it less busy. Does it solve the problem? Cause again, when we had fewer cars here years ago, we had worse traffic problems.
Yeah.
Interesting point, yeah.
So I, I, I think focusing on cap is maybe not the right way to frame it, I guess. When we should be thinking of solutions that help us achieve the things that we actually want to achieve.
For sure. Because also there's like user experience, right? Like we don't want it to become so busy that people don't want to come here. Cause it's already kind of happening with some, like you talk to people from Calgary or Canmore, whatever, and they go, oh my God. Go to Banff in the summer, oh, it's like.
Yeah, how do you deal with all the people?
It's like, oh, it's awesome anyways.
Well, there's a lot that goes into dealing with all the people. I mean, yeah.
We talked a little bit about intercept parking and this is kind of a like quirky question. I just want to kind of pick your brain on, because I feel like something like intercept parking is parking that's built more for visitors. Like no local is going to go park at the train station and walk blocks to their house. Who do you think should get priority in parking, tourists or locals?
Oh, well, in the residential streets, residents, right? The resident parking program right now incorporates a bunch of, of like in town party. You, where you guys are, is this, do you need the resident pass for here?
No.
Right? So yeah, there are residential streets that are going to be seeing more vehicles because of things like the development and the housing we're talking about, right? Where we should make sure that the residential street parking is for residents. I know that there are parts of town where there are issues with hotel guests, like where they.
Yeah, the hotels don't have parking.
We have some, right? But we just need to, to say like, no, these are residential streets, they're for residents.
Oh dude, down the end of Cougar, like in front of, uh, like Northwoods down there. Dude, the summer, it's nuts, like.
Well, that's it, because the Northwoods has parking and then those hotels there have a little bit of parking.
Yeah, that's all like.
I don't want to name the hotel, but like up the block from, um, what's it called? Wherever you used to live, two blocks up, there's no parking at that hotel at all, I don't think.
They, they need to figure, figure that out, right? If they have people driving to the hotel and know where to park the cars, well, then maybe those cars need to go to the train station.
And then they need to walk.
And they need, well, or, or get a shuttle, like your hotel, shuttle people to the parking, right? There's, there is, uh, you know, a spot, there's a, I think it's Town of Banff, but there's a spot in the industrial compound. This is a big empty lot and people parking buses, like tour buses and stuff there. But there's like, that's an option of, you know, there's other places not near those, those hotels that vehicles could be parked. Yeah, you can shuttle people to their cars or whatever. But I, yeah, I think we need to expand the resident parking, um, to more of the town. So that those places are not, you know, people that are parking on, you know, Cougar Street or Squirrel Street or, or Martin Street, you know? And then walking downtown and doing their thing. No, those people should be in those intercept lots or downtown paying for their parking, right? The whole idea of paid parking is that it's going to, for the people that want to go downtown, have a meal and do a shopping experience, it's there, it's available. They pay for that convenience, like you were saying, downtown Toronto and other big cities.
You pay for convenience.
You pay to park at those places and like, you're not going to want to pay a lot. So you're only going to park for a little bit and then you leave and then somebody else can come in and pay and park there for that little bit. You know, the, the extra piece to that is we need to have something for commuters, right? There are people that
For sure.
Don't live here that work here, right? People from Canmore, Cochrane, whatever. So we do need to consider that, right? And people that have work vehicles.
And again, with like, we were talking earlier with the housing, that's a growing number of people that don't live here and it's work here.
You know, so maybe some of the, like the Bear Street Parkade, maybe Bow Avenue, maybe a few of those places that are like not the train station, but they're not the paid parking areas. We need to have some more consideration for, you know, those commuters or, you know, people that need their vehicle for their work, right? I need my vehicle for my work. I need to park my car near my shop sometimes, right? You gotta load and unload stuff.
They can't make you go on the parking ride.
Okay, yeah, and be like, yeah, I just bought these three hundred bottles of propane. I'm just going to take them one at a time on the bus, whatever.
Yeah.
You know, like, that's my example, but there needs to be some, some consideration for that. Which I think we can, that, that, that's one of the, the things that came up when I was talking to somebody about housing is that they're like, but now all the parking, it's like, yeah. It's gonna create some challenges around parking, but we can change those rules. It's our program.
That's exactly what the mayor said. She said like a really cool quote and she's like, I don't care where people are parking their cars. I care where people are living and sleeping, you know what I mean? Like.
I'd rather have an apartment than a spot to park.
There is a prioritization that needs to occur. I do care that people have somewhere to park, right? But we can help with that by changing some of the rules, right? We can, we can maybe say that with some of the increasing density, maybe the, the resident parking thing is not every single person gets a parking pass. Maybe now it's every property gets so many parking passes based on, you know, the, the, the housing that's there now and the number of people. And maybe some of the issues where people are building new housing in what was once their parking lot, right? Okay, but those, there are going to be no more resident parking passes issued for that, for that property. Or you had parking, you're now getting rid of parking to build new housing. Great, we want new housing, right? So that housing is for people without cars, so they don't get a parking pass. And if they want to park, then they do have to go and park in the train station or the industrial lot or somewhere that's not at their house. Because that's just not what that house includes.
I mean, that's, that's.
I'm not, I'm not gonna be the one that sits here and like draws out the rule for that of like this property, that property, how many?
For sure. It can come to consensus.
Something we can do, we can tell our planning department, hey, you know, we need to look at the resident program and say, we want to have spaces for people that need them and make sure that people aren't taking away spaces and putting those cars on the road and creating more of a problem that way. So, but again, we want more housing. We can work with the parking because we have a lot more control over that, who parks where and for how long and why and stuff.
Fair enough.
So.
Like, that's a good focus, right? Like. No kidding. Honestly.
Sorry, I talk a lot. This is gonna be a long interview.
That's all right. We don't like, this is, this is good. Like, the whole point of this is so people can get a sense of who you are, right? Like, I was always curious of who you are just based on your online presence. So this is awesome, just putting a face to a name.
The length of my posts might be now an indication of how I can go on sometime. If I'm on a talking about a topic I'm passionate about, which with municipal issues I'm passionate about.
I mean, I would hope so if you're running for town council, for sure. Let's move to the train station, all right? Do you think it's a viable way forward in dealing with our congestion issues?
Yeah. I mean, I mean, the the train station brings a couple of things. First, it's it's like the first thing you see when you come into town via that Norquay entrance.
Right?
Right? You come in, there's some forest, there's a like a an arena, there's a hiking trail, then there's a train track. Okay, train track. And then you look to your left and it's a big ugly gravel pit.
Yeah, exactly.
Like, the the north side of the tracks there, there's like a, like, there's already an area that's like fenced off. There's like some CPKC, like a bunch of oily railroad ties stacked up.
It has been like prior use land, so there is, but just north of that as well is protected and has been protected, right?
North of the Fenlands is still in the parks, right? South of the Fenlands, between the Fenlands parking lot and the the north side of the tracks, there is some forest through there.
Because that is the tightest pinch point for wildlife crossing for the whole town. That's what I think. I think, I forget who was.
It's 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 been identified as a secondary corridor because animals that aren't coming into town. You know, they'll move along the train tracks, ideally not. It's not a great place for animals to be. You know, north of the train track, so there is a path along there. There's a much wider wildlife corridor north of the Fenlands, on the other side of the Fenlands. Which, great, there's there's still a big wildlife corridor there. There's no reason why any development on the north side of the train tracks couldn't, you know, one remediate a bunch of that that crappy, you know, industrial train station gravel pit into something that's usable, right? That's going to help with the other issues that we have around, you know, traffic and visitors and whatever. But also be navigable by wildlife, like during during the day. Like, we during during the day, we don't get a lot of wildlife walking through town. Right? And the animals that do kind of walk a little too close to town, Parks Canada shows up with their, they're like hockey sticks with the flagging tape and the paintball, you know. Chasing them away out of town. But at night, there's a lot more of that movement. Right? We, if if there was parking in that lot, again, we have control over who parks where and when and why. It could be closed at night.
I think like they are closed at night, but I think there's been a definitely a decrease since they've paved that. You know, the train station parking lot, there's obviously been a decrease in animal uses. They're not gonna walk through an empty parking lot with its pave versus a nice wooded area.
They might walk through it if they're trying to get somewhere else. You know, they're not gonna spend a lot of time hanging out there, probably, although the number of elk that I have hanging out in the traffic circle in front of my house a lot of mornings. If there's grass nearby, they'll eat the grass.
I just think like the focus maybe shouldn't be in paving more spaces in the park. Like, I don't know, from an ecological ecological perspective, I don't know if it's worth the trade off. Well, there is a fair, there is a bunch of stuff like they do, like CP does have like a bunch of buildings and other stuff like on the. It's like an old bunkhouse. Yeah, like there's a bunch of like previously developed stuff over.
Like, I I personally haven't walked through that that forest and that's, but I know that, yeah, there's a big, there's a big shed. There is an area there that is fenced, like a part in that forested area. Right? So, I mean, removing that would improve connectivity. I mean, maybe, maybe the parking lot that goes through there has some easement. Maybe it has a grass strip, you know, that allows some wildlife trees. I I mean, that'd be pretty wild, but, you know, or or like a ground floor wildlife cord.
They do underpasses too, yeah.
I I don't know. I think that might be a little wild for a for a parking for parking situation. I mean, I I think it's fair to say that you don't think that it's worth the trade off. But I think that's where it comes down to. There's gonna be people on both sides. I think some people are gonna say, I think it is worth the trade off because of how, you know, that's actually going to help improve a lot of things. The town might, you know, if that that strip of wildlife corridor, if the animals are going to the north side of the Fenlands, right? It's gonna impact, you know, their movement in that piece, but maybe it, maybe there's more we can do to make sure that that north side is is less disturbed. Right? Maybe there's better education we can provide our guests. Maybe there's more people down there that are helping direct people away from wildlife when they are in the area. Right? Some of the stuff on the south side of the train station, right? The the like the transit hub where you're gonna be able to leave your car, get in a vehicle and go to the places you want to go without even going into town. Right? Or driving through town at least, you know, maybe you walk into town or take a shuttle. You know, I, that's, that's, that's part of politics.
Sure, yeah.
You know, there's gonna be these decisions of, you know, maybe it comes down to the north side isn't feasible. Maybe it's not feasible to the extent that was originally planned. Right? Maybe we have to say, okay, we can do some of that, but maybe not the whole thing. Maybe we can leave some of it. Maybe there's things we can do. Maybe there's policies we can implement that still allow for wildlife movement. That's, you know, like I said, there's maybe things we can do to improve connectivity while also achieving some of the goals.
With the train, yeah.
That would be ideal. Right? If we can achieve all of the goals.
Very, very well said, honestly, like, yeah, I don't know. It's it's always kind of that trade off that we have. We're talking about especially infrastructure projects in the Town of Banff. It's the ecological side versus the development side. Are we doing what's best for the national park?
For me, it comes down to that areas in the Town of Banff already. We have such a limit on what we can do and where. That I don't want to do anything outside of town. Right? Like that, that's, that's an absolute red line. We should be working within the boundaries we have, but I think that means we have to look at some of those areas that are in the boundaries and try to make the best use of them. You know, to achieve, you know, environmental, you know, economic, you know, sustainability on all fronts, you know.
Awesome. Well, well said. Again, like, this is why we wanted to pick your brain on these topics, right? Kind of see, see where you stand and, you know.
Yeah.
Next one, bit of a dicey one. What is your position on pedestrian only infrastructure? Now, for those out there listening, of course, we're referring to the ped zone. Not a thing this year. Would you support a future one? Because it will be on the table in the next in the next council or was it?
There's no guarantee it comes back.
True, there's no guarantee it comes back.
There was just with the, with the, with the plebiscite, sorry, the vote of electorates, it was not a plebiscite. Anyway, with that, what that meant is that that question couldn't be revisited for, I think it was three years.
Yeah, three years. But it will come in the next term, so.
It could.
Could come in the next year.
Yeah, yeah. Right? Maybe nobody mentions it again. Maybe it just goes away. I don't know. But, I mean, I liked it.
Yeah.
I think enough people liked it. I think that, you know, I was very publicly pro pedestrian zone when it was a thing. I was out there. I was explaining the reasons why I think it's, you know, valuable. That doesn't mean I don't believe the people that had issues with it, right? It's, you know, I can, I can sit there and be like, yes, okay, I acknowledge those are, those are some challenges, right? It created some, some traffic issues, especially on those residential streets on the east side.
The one that you would have been affected by, right?
Yeah, I didn't notice that. I didn't, again, I didn't notice it that much.
Okay, fair.
Because again, I'm leaving in the morning.
Yeah.
And honestly, the biggest traffic problem I run into is coming home from Camor, you know, between five and seven o'clock, coming off the highway and Link Street. Cause I come down, you know, along past the the hospital and the White Museum and stuff. Making that left turn onto Buffalo Street, making the right turn onto the bridge, just that bit, especially on Wednesdays, right? When the market's going on, pedestrians all over that that area too. That is kind of for me, personally, in my day to day, the biggest backup that I see coming down the hill, not so much. The, right, the pedestrian zone. Yeah, so I get that that did create some challenges. My, my intent during that process was to say, okay, it's created some problems. Let's fix those problems that it's created. Right? We know that these are issues. We can, we can do things with that. Some of them are probably bigger fixes, like looking at traffic flow around town as a whole is something that needs to happen if we want to do the pedestrian zone again. Right? If we, if we do the pedestrian zone, I, you know, because right now it's a big wide space right down the middle of town. You know, big, like median in the middle, but that could be public space. There could be spaces for artists to to perform, you know, play music or do things. It can be public seating. It could be, you know, you could do a lot of cool stuff. Right? But then we do need to realize, okay, then we do need to permanently and, you know.
Change the infrastructure.
Look at, okay, then where are our vehicles going and what types of vehicles? Right? The streets on the east side of Banff Avenue, Beaver, Muskrat, Otter, right? Should primarily just be for the residents on those streets, right? Them being through traffic. Beaver is a little tougher because it has some back access into some of those businesses there, the Mount Royal and and those as well. There's a lane way we can work with as well. There's some potential. But looking at those streets and saying, well, you know what, maybe Muskrat and Otter aren't through streets on all of the blocks. Maybe the 100 block you can get to from Buffalo, but not from Caribou. Maybe at the top of that street, maybe we build a little berm there, a little parquet. And so you just can't go through, right? You're only going down this dead end street if you're living on that street. That's gonna completely, you know, cut off that through traffic.
Fair enough, fair enough. Right? This reminds me of something I was talking to, I went to the first planning Town of Banff Planning, or no, the Banff National Park Planning Committee or.
Yeah, the Park Management Plan?
Yes. So I went there and I was talking to, I think it was the gentleman that owns the gas station at Lake Louise.
Right.
And he was like, I was talking about traffic and all this stuff, it was during the ped zone time, and he's like, you gotta keep the people moving. It's right. Everyone wants to stop. So I think that's a very good point that you mentioned in not having it, like maybe having a one way circle around the town and reevaluate where we let people drive in which direction. It's like my always thought, especially for traffic across the bridge, was if that second pedestrian bridge was a vehicle bridge, you can have a one way bridge going this way and a one way bridge going that way. You keep people moving in a circular motion. That way you're not disrupting traffic, right? Like.
Fair.
I think that would be like, that would, you know, almost one way all over town. Like, you you don't go in downtown in major cities where traffic is an issue. You don't have people going both ways, right? You make them go around the block and.
It makes certain turns easier. And there, there's like people whose professions are studying this stuff, right? They go to university for like, you know, eight years and study like traffic.
People movement, yeah.
Right? And, you know, so there are people out there that'll, they can come with to us with some ideas, but, you know, if we're going to say, okay, we want to relook at our town. We want that that central piece of our town to be really walkable, friendly, welcoming. Right? Use that space for, you know, again, potential interpretive programs, educational pieces. You know, like, teach people more about this area, give people the space to walk around and, you know, not be jammed on the on the sidewalks and enjoy some nature and enjoy those views and, you know, we can do that. And then we have to say, okay, that's gonna displace the people that use that for driving. Okay, so that was being displaced to some of those residential streets. Okay, if we put traffic calming measures, speed bumps narrowing the streets, make the street do like a windy thing. There's all these tools that you can use to reduce, you know, to calm traffic in areas. And what that does is it, it makes people not want to go there too.
For sure.
Right? So, and like I said, if you just block off the end of one of the streets, okay, then you're not gonna get through traffic. Great, residents only. Right? But then they're gonna go somewhere else. So we have to look at something like, okay, what if we take Links? Oh, man, because it's like Norquay Road, Link Street, Bear Street, like that, from from Central Park to Norquay, I think that one piece of road is like four different names.
Yeah.
Anyway, whatever, it's a different thing. But if we take a look at that and say, okay, that is the now the main artery that people are coming in this way. If they're accessing anything across the bridge or Central Park or downtown, that's the way they go. If they're going to any of these houses or Tunnel Mountain or Banff Centre, maybe the other end of town is is where we want that traffic to flow. Right? Because then we don't have to worry about them trying to cross over or whatever, that Banff Avenue strip. Right? Then we have to look at at that Link Street and say, okay, well, this is where we want the buses and the trucks to be going. Right? To get where they need to go. Okay, so we need to make sure that those corners are wide enough. Right? We need to make, maybe we lose some of the parking on the sides of those streets, just so we have the width for some of those bigger vehicles. Or whatever we need to do to look at that and say, okay, this is now where people go. Maybe some of those areas become two lanes. Again, I'm not the that went to traffic management school. But we say, okay, that's the the stuff we need to have in place before we then look at closing Banff Avenue. As well as things like emergency access. I know a lot of people had concerns about emergency access with pedestrian zone. Like, what do we do in the event of a, of a, you know, a townwide evacuation? My argument to that was always, well, if we have a townwide evacuation, we have everybody in the town on the street in their car trying to get out of town. It doesn't really matter how fast you're gonna get from the CIBC you know, to the two exits out of town.
Cause the highway's gonna be back.
Cause, well, I mean, assuming the highway is free.
Yeah.
Right? Vehicles that get to those points can get on the highway and go. The backups are gonna be, there's one lane on the the Norquay Road. And then there's one lane at the other end of town.
Yeah.
Right? Right now, in front of the canoe, it actually goes down to one lane. Right? Even if you look at, okay, if we used the lanes in both directions, okay, well, then there's two lanes, right? Because like in an emergency, you can just be like, these now both go that way.
Yeah.
There is no this way at all. And they're all going that way. You're still gonna get to the highway with one on ramp in each direction. Right?
Yeah.
At both ends of town, there is only one ramp in each direction, and maybe one of those directions is a wall of fire. Maybe, maybe not. Maybe we can use both of those on ramps. There's four lanes we can potentially take to get out of town. Right? The the bottlenecks are going to be the bridge itself, right? There's three lanes. Right? Or where all of that traffic coming off of the bridge is meeting traffic coming down from Tunnel Mountain or in town or, you know, from downtown, just getting to those lanes. Right? If you take Banff Avenue, you're gonna end up in the exact same place that you got anyway.
True.
Right? Where it does matter is if you're going and if there's no traffic, if it's just you and your car and Banff Avenue is closed to get from the CIBC to somewhere at the edge of town. It might take you a little bit longer if you can't just go straight down Banff Avenue. In the event of an emergency, like an evacuation, I think we've got bottlenecks in other places, which would be more of an issue than that bridge. Because going down those two lanes of Banff Avenue just gets you to one of those pinch points faster.
Right.
And the pinch points are gonna be blocked because they're pinch points. And so you're just gonna sit on Banff Avenue instead of sitting somewhere else. I get that. Right? The the idea of, well, what happens if, you know, somebody up in Middle Springs needs an ambulance? How long does it take? You know, the the roads are choked with cars. I mean, ambulances have lights and sirens and very rarely. I mean, not, not to say it doesn't happen, but rarely do I see the the traffic backed up coming down Mountain Avenue and backed up going up Mountain Avenue.
It's usually one or the other.
Yeah. And if an ambulance needs to go up Mountain Avenue, it'll take whichever lane it needs to take.
I mean, I was very.
It doesn't have to sit there and wait in traffic.
And I still felt like that concern was a bit maybe one that was blown out of proportion a little bit because it does have that scary factor of like, you're risking people's lives and.
If I'm going up Mountain Avenue and I see an ambulance coming down in my lane, I'm gonna pull over on the side.
It's just one of those emotional points that people can use to like hammer their point, right?
Yeah. I I get that it's an emotional response, but I think there's rational answer to some of those. And that, those are some of the arguments I was trying to make for the pedestrian zone. I I think it's a net benefit to the town. I think we can resolve some of the issues that it does create.
Yeah.
And I think there's some education around some of those emotional responses.
For sure.
Right? There's, there's definitely some studies out there. I read one recently, I can't remember where it was, but they, it was this this theoretical situation of like, if you man, how do I explain it? But if you have this theoretical, like point A, point B, and what you can do is from point A, take a highway where the speed limit's 100 kilometers an hour and then it's 30 kilometers an hour for the last little bit. Right? Or you've got an other option where it's like 30 kilometers an hour and then 100 kilometers an hour. Right? For the the second bit, right? There's sort of those two options. And they were measuring, you know, like and saying, okay, imagine like, like everything is at max capacity and these are the speeds that you can take. Where does the congestion build up? And then they put a connection between those, those points where, I'd have to draw it for you, but they they made a connection where you said, okay, you can actually just drive straight through. Right? Well, now, because it's backing up at these slow points, people are gonna take the straight through, but then everybody takes the straight through because it's faster for them, but it slows down for everybody else. And it was actually faster to not have that connector piece. It was actually faster. Everybody got where they were going faster, taking the other routes. And it, it wasn't intuitive. But when you sat down and you showed the math on this study, it was, I think it was a YouTube video, actually, but I'll see if I can find it later. But it was just really interesting where looking at human behavior and traffic options, giving people sometimes more options leads to worse trafficking.
Fair.
Right? Where it's like, if there's just kind of a this or a this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I always thought about that. It was like, if everyone is on the road doing the same, if everyone's theoretically doing the speed limit, right? Like, why, why is there traffic anyway? You know what I mean? Like, anyways, it's beside the point.
Yeah.
As someone whose business depends on tourism, what does overtourism mean to you? And do you think it's something we're faced here?
Yeah, so, I mean, I started with the, what does the tourism mean or overtourism mean to me? And I, if I turn to my page. To me, overtourism is where the quantity of visitation outpaces our ability to manage it, which therefore impacts the quality.
For sure.
So there's kind of different elements in there, right? You've got the number of visitors. You've got the experience that they have, because we want that to be as good as possible. Right? But the piece in the middle is the management piece. And I think there's a lot we can do in there. Right? I, as a, as a place that, you know, our one industry is tourism. We don't, we don't have anything else.
There's no industrial, there's nothing.
Things like, even the word overtourism, to me conjures up this idea of it's us versus them.
For sure, it does have a negative connotation.
Like, we're, we're the residents, they're the tourists in that when there's too many of them, it affects us. Right? Well, in fact, it impacts everybody. So I don't like the the conflict that the term implies. I like to think of it more as a, how are we managing? Right? What are we doing about it? Like, I think we all know some of the examples, right? The one I'll use is like Cascade Ponds. It's a place where locals, we like to go, we like to have our picnic, but we go there, there's not enough tables. Right? The tables are crowded and the garbages are overflowing. Right? There's, you know, it's, there's no parking, there's drones hovering overhead. There's like, somebody, somebody throwing rocks at a bird or, you know, what, you know, it's like that that experience of like, ugh, all these tourists. Right? Where it's like, okay, well, how can we manage that? Right? Where it's like, okay, well, how can we manage that a little bit better? Like, do we need to provide more services, right? Do we need to have more garbage bins? Do we need to have them cleared more frequently? Do we need to have somebody there that people check in with? They learn the rules, right? Somebody goes through and reminds, and I know Parks tries to do that. You sometimes go down, you see the, you know, the, the Parks intern kids that go around and be like, hey, have you filled out your, your water?
Registration.
Yeah, the water, the boat registration form. Yeah. Self-registration form. Oh, also don't leave your hot dogs on your table.
Yeah.
You know, and, and there's some of that. Do we need more of that? Like, do we?
But wouldn't that bring more? Then you need more people, you need more staff, right? Like, is that all exacerbate, right? The more, I don't know.
Maybe, I mean, the, the one thing, like if you look at, look at, uh, Moraine Lake.
Right.
Moraine Lake was a big problem before, right? The, there was almost no parking there, right? And so people were showing up at like four in the morning and the lot was full and they get in, there's no parking, they turn around and they go out, the road was backing up. Right? It was affecting the highway. People couldn't get in and do that. So the, the shuttle system has really done a lot to fix the traffic issues on that road. But you, do you know that there's way more people there now than there were before?
I think especially since they opened up to private shuttles. Yeah. There's more people there than ever now, but it's controlled in a manner that's.
Yeah. Like when we were out there a few weeks ago, it seemed like very controlled. Like it was like. I mean, everybody's coming in with somebody whose job relies on them having a good experience.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Right? So, I mean, every company is going to be different. Every driver is going to be different. I, I drove for, for one of the bus companies in town years ago, for like one year. And part of that is like, the people are on your bus, they're your people. You want them to have a good time. You're going to tell them how to enjoy the place. You're going to tell, you know, remind them how to respect the place.
Right.
Right? There's some element of that, right? So there's more people exploring Moraine Lake now than there were before. I'm hoping they're getting a better experience because they're getting something as part of that journey. I mean, maybe that doesn't happen all the time. I would hope it does. But it's fixed a lot of the traffic issues, right? The parking and all the vehicles and the safety of that, that, you know, the safety issues that was causing. But that's a change, but that to me is a, is a way where it's like, okay, the people are coming anyway. We need to manage it. Right? We need to, you know, and there, there is a limit to how many people can go to Moraine Lake. There are only so many sheets, seats, seats on those shuttles. There seem to be like.
The shuttles can go unlimited times though. They can go unlimited.
Yeah. So, but those are policies that not as the town, but you know, as the park, because Parks is managing that. The park could do, could manage that differently. They could say, there's only so many shuttles or only so, you know, that is one way to manage it. And the only way to get in and out is by shuttle. So they can say, we only want this many people and they could do it.
For sure.
Right? Because they've made that change. The, that's just, that's what I'm talking about when I, when we, when I'm talking about management of visitation. It may, like I said, it's kind of the same as, uh, what we were talking about before. It's just that framing of, well, let's focus on what we actually want to achieve. And how do we get there with things we're going to do rather than focusing on too many? We need to cut and cap.
That was the next question was, would you support a cap on visitation or tourism in the summer months? I think we broached that earlier in saying that there's other ways to get there. I think that's your approach. There's other ways to get there without saying.
Yeah. And maybe it's not, maybe, cause again, I haven't sat down and gone through the process of this, you know, human use management. Right? To, to say, you know, what is appropriate for a given place at a given time and given dates, right? And maybe it ends up effectively limiting or capping, but I don't want to sit here now and say, there is like, maybe, maybe a, a cap isn't what we want to do. But maybe it's a, you know, there's limits to parking. Maybe there is timed entry for certain locations. Right? Cause timed entry spreads entry out, right? So instead of being busy from 12 to five. You can spread some of that out a little bit and they can enjoy it earlier in the day or later in the evening. I tell a lot of my guests that come and visit me and pick up their bear sprays and hiking poles and stuff. They're like, uh, you know, we want to do Johnson Canyon, like, I'm like, great. Go before breakfast.
Yeah.
Go after dinner.
Yeah.
In, in July, it's light until like 10:30.
For sure.
Right? Go do a two hour hike at seven o'clock. Bring a headlamp and, you know, just in case. People should be prepared. Yeah. You hike later in the day, you should be prepared. Like, you know, I still did a lot of guiding and adventure tourism stuff, right? So be smart about it. But, you know, you can still enjoy those places, not at the peak times.
Oh, and it's going to be much more enjoyable for like those people to go out there when it's not.
Yeah.
20,000 people on the same trail.
It was like six rows deep, taking selfie, Instagram selfies, Lake Louise.
Wild. Right on. Um, so yeah, I don't know.
I think we're halfway, right?
We're, we're definitely getting there for sure. Um, we're going to jump a couple, because I think we've kind of talked about a few of these already.
But I wrote all my notes.
Um, in your opinion, what would be the first step towards a more livable Banffer frontline workers? Cause I think that's something that we definitely want to touch on.
How, I mean, housing is the first thing, especially front, when we talk about frontline, we were all talking about it. We've been there, right? The housing that's, you know, rent, rental housing affordable, or at least, you know, there's a definition of affordable of 30% of your netting or whatever. But, you know, below market or, you know, at least, at least not tied to your employment. Like staff housing has its place. It's great. I, I would love there for me, there to be more. You know, options like Tinu, which are, you know, not profit motivated.
For sure.
Right? The, um, you know, the rents that people pay there, uh, you know, it's all calculated, you know? To, you know, make sure that it's still in that, you know, livable sort of range and, you know, goes into maintaining the place and into the housing. Community reserve to hopefully one day build additional housing like that. Cause those are great, because you know that as long as you meet your criteria for living in, you know, BHC rental housing, um, you have a place. Right? Like I was, I mentioned before that axe, you know, the guillotine. That's just resting over your head of the landlord, you know, saying, I want to move back into my house or I'm going to turn into staff accommodation. And then somebody like.
Or I just don't like you.
Sure.
Yeah. That was what happened with my last place. They didn't like me and basically said, we're not renewing your lease after I was here for 11 years. But they, uh, they had a track record of that with the past two years before that. So it's, we've all been there, but.
Yeah.
It's like, how do we get? I don't know. I feel like staff housing can sometimes kind of be like, almost like a trap for some people, depending on what company you're working for.
I mean, it keeps you stuck in your employment sometimes, because housing is harder to find. So you end up in a job that maybe you don't want to stay. It limits maybe your forward progression or your growth and your career growth. Right? So things that aren't staff accommodation, maybe thing, more things that are, you know, public, um, you know, like Tinu, that's BHC rental. I would love to see more of that. That'd be cool.
I would agree with you there. I think like big part of my mission or our mission on the over podcast is kind of speaking out for that frontline worker. Because oftentimes they're the ones that can't speak out at all, because again.
Well, yeah, you lose your job, you lose your head.
The guillotine over your head, whatever, right? And it's, I think that's how we get more of that age range, the 24 to 35. Into our council election this year is kind of by.
You know, I've.
Dealing with those issues.
I've had this, this idea in my head that when I was, when I was a kid, I was in the cadet program. So I've been away on a couple of like summer camps.
Cool.
Uh, and I've been to a couple of military bases and, you know, like housing on a military base is, it's not for profit. That's for sure.
Yeah.
And there are, there are places where you go and, um, you go into your, your, it's not barracks, but it's like housing. So you get, it's like a, essentially the best, um, uh, example is like a dorm room. Right? If you're building and on each floor, there's a bunch of rooms in your room. You've got your bed, you've got your dresser, you've got your night table, you got a little mirror, you got a little like vanity type thing. You have like room for your stuff for you, a little place to like lounge. Maybe it's not big, but it's yours. It's your space. It's private.
Right.
Right? Dignity, I think is a big part of, of appropriate housing. And if, you know, you had a place that had a bunch of these like individual rooms where you had your own space, you know, like decorate it, you know, you can have a little, you know, have a guest over, you know, hang out, watch a movie or whatever. You've got a space, it's yours.
Right.
You know, maybe you have a small bathroom, maybe it's a shared, you know, facility. Maybe you have a shared bathroom or, um. And maybe in the same building or maybe somewhere else, there's a dining hall where you're on a meal plan. You can go, you get healthy food. All right. Maybe you don't have a place where you can cook for yourself, but you go there, you've got your, you know, here are your menu options. You know, here are your like takeaway food options, right? It's all affordable. It's not profit motivated.
I think that, yeah, that's, that would be ideal.
Right? I, I mean, I just have this, I, I call it a barracks, but that's again, because of the, the military experience. Maybe it's a dorm style.
Yeah. Like dorm, like you see that in colleges, you see that almost at the Fairmont with their.
A little bit, yeah.
Their kind of dorm style lodging where you have four rooms with a common area.
Yeah. I mean, up there, it started out as dual, you know, you had two beds in that room and a little, little kitchen, small kitchen space and a little living room space. As it got busier, I heard that they've been adding more people to those rooms.
Yeah. Okay.
You know, because they have demands too.
Yeah. What are you going to do, right?
Right? They have to put them somewhere. Um, but I, I would love to see something along those lines. Because thinking about when I was young, coming here for the first time, if I had a small space, it was private, it was mine, I could lock the door, I could keep my stuff, I knew it was safe. Right? That, you know, I paid my, you know, my rent, I had my, you know, follow, I followed the rules. And I just knew that that was my little, little slice of home that I could go back to if I wanted to.
Yeah.
Right? And, and, you know, going into the food thing, because, you know, food, uh, security is a big issue, obviously in the Bow Valley too. If there was that like, like dining, I, I call it a dining hall, because it's, I have a, don't have a, as good of a, a better definition for it. But a place where it's like, I know I pay my, however much a month, I go in, I scan my card, I've got like a hot meal. Or I can, you know, or I've got options, you know, just a couple of weeks ago, uh, I was actually at the CFP Board in Ontario. And that was the experience, you know, I had my room, I had my key, right? We would go down to the, the thing and you line up and you get your, your hot options and you just get your food. It was great. I didn't have to cook it for myself. I didn't have to clean anything. Yeah. I had a place to stay. I had food to eat. I was there, did my, did my stuff and got out. As a young person, that's like, you know, maybe 18 to 20, whatever. You know, some people will be there maybe a lot later, but, uh, but that kind of place, you know, in a place like this. I don't know. I, I just think it could work really well together. I don't have any concrete ideas of where that would be or who would build it.
I don't know. I think there, I think it's definitely our businesses in town. Like, you know, we said, there's an example at the Fairmont. Like I think there, there is examples out there that, that.
Well, and maybe we could, we could do one. I was talking about that public, private thing. Maybe there's one where you can say, hey, businesses. If you want this housing for your staff, maybe you can contribute. Maybe you get, you know, so many spots that you could have potentially. But the people are not going to be necessarily like, uh, it's not like that person that lives there. If they lose their job, they lose their housing.
Yeah.
Or some, something that it's like, it's managed separately.
Right.
So that you know, if you're in there and you're paying your rent, you're following the rules, you've got a place. But, you know, I, I, I don't know how that, that business relationship goes.
Yeah, fair.
Yeah. Maybe they can put their people in those rooms initially, but yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Something to look into, that's for sure. I mean.
That's my kind of pie in the sky. Like what would make it way better for those initial people coming into town, just to get the foot in the door? You know, a dignified, appropriate, you know, place to live where you have some privacy, right?
Bring a little humility to that situation a little bit more, maybe. Cause yeah, often overlooked and easy forgotten is those, those frontline workers. Why should people vote for you?
I don't know.
Best answer all day.
Yeah, right? Just don't if you want, I guess. No. Um, I, I think that, um. You know, I've, uh. I, I want to vote for people that have the ability to look at an issue. To be open to inputs. You know, that will speak with the community, that go to the, the, the public information, the open houses, you know, to talk to people. I know in the past, that's been discouraged for counselors to actually go to some of those, those sessions and that it's only supposed to be administration at the public. You know, the public information, the feedback, none of those ones, like the.
Why would you not want to go talk to those people though? You know what I mean? Like that.
What, what I've been told is that the theory is that administration is going out to the town to gather information from the residents. They will summarize that information and present that to council.
Okay. So they almost don't want the influence of council there or?
I, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna try to guess at what people's intentions are. I just know that if that's where people are going to engage with the people that are making the plans, right? To present to council, they should also be able to present to council, right? And then there's opportunities through, you know, the, the public hearings and people can email council all they want. But like, when we have these, these like sessions that the town puts on to say, we're going to talk about, there's one coming up, it's about the Fennelins.
Yeah.
Right? We're going to put this thing on, the Fennelins, come out, come see what our designs and our thoughts are. People are going to see them for the first time, a lot of the time and have thoughts and opinions on it.
For sure.
And they're going to express them, right? They should be able to express them to administration, but I also think they should be able to express them to council too.
Of course.
Right? Cause humans are humans. We all have biases, right? And I think it's valuable to get it from both sides. I think it's valuable to hear, okay, what did administration gather? Cause they're gathering from multiple sources. It's not just the public hearings. There's online surveys. There's all kinds of stuff. They're going to boil it down into, here's what we heard, right? But I like going to those and I like talking to some of those people. I would also like to talk to some of the counselors and be like, well, what do you think about this council? Yeah. So I mean, if, if I get elected, I still intend to go to them. Cause I like going to them. And if I'll have more time to do it too. Cause I want to hear what people are telling administration. I want to hear if administration then tells me what that person told administration. Right? Is it the same? Did I hear something a little bit different than what they heard from that person? That's, it's all perception, but the more sources you can get your information from, I think the better. So though, that, that's the kind of counselor I want to vote for, right? That is open to those ideas can then, you know, look at the, the big picture and say, okay, if this is what we want to change. What sort of knock on effects, you know, could there potentially be? You know, sort of. Think about, okay, what are the potential scenarios? What situations is this going to create? And look at the Banff sign. That one popped up. I didn't know that was going in there until one day it was there. I was, whoa, okay. But right away I was like, that's going to be a problem.
For sure.
Right? And I think it, we've determined that it's not a great spot and we've had to now do something else. And sometimes you find that there's been a change and it's like, whoa, wait a sec. Who, we didn't, we didn't think about that too. So I think a little bit more of that on council, I would like to see. But then like the decisiveness, once you've, you know, looked at all that information, once you've asked all the questions. Once you've spoken to the people in the community and get all the different opinions, have that open mind, right? Make a decision and stick to it, right? I was a little disappointed during the, the pedestrian zone thing that, um, you know, there were, there were absolutely groups in the community out there, they were on both sides. If it were me, I did run last time. So a lot of this last term, I was like, okay, if it were me, what would I have done?
Yeah.
I would have put myself out there and say, look, I think this is still the right decision. This is why. Here, I'm going to try and communicate with all of you why I think this is still the right decision. Uh, I've spoken to some of the people in council and I get why they didn't, right? I understand that they said, well, we had our time, right? Now it was just to put it to the public. We're going to let the public do its thing. We're not going to try to influence that decision. I'm like, yeah, but that, that, I think that's the job. When I've decided, if I've, you know, it's still the job to listen and take feedback and have an open mind and be persuaded. Right? If you're persuaded by facts, by studies, by data, absolutely, there's room to say I was wrong. But in that case, you know, I would have liked to see a little bit more, like, you know, sticking with the decision that you think is right. Right? Cause if you didn't think you were right, were you wrong then or you're wrong now? I, I don't, I don't know. So. I think there's something to be said for being a little bit more, like take a stand on what you believe. And I want people on council that are approachable, that you can reach, you know, either, I've had, I don't have a problem, you know, send a message or, or something to anybody on council.
Super reachable.
Yeah. You can email. Some of them are on, you know, social media, some of them, if you have their number, whatever, you can text if you, if you know them, but. You know, I don't think any of the other candidates running that I know of right now have, uh, you know, that online, you know, engagements.
Not as, not as much as yourself.
Yeah. And, you know, like, I think there is a place for that. I understand why. You know, a lot of those public figures don't want to engage with people in those online spaces, because they can very quickly devolve into non-productive conversations. But I think, you know, you guys have seen the way that I interact on, on pretty much just Facebook. I have Instagram, but. I, I'm an elder millennial.
Yeah.
Same, you know? Yeah, yeah. So it's like, Facebook was like a thing when I was like in, you know, post-secondary, it's like, what's this new thing? I'll get into that. And then the other ones came up and I was like, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know WhatsApp.
I'm in the same boat.
Whatever. But, you know, through Facebook, I've liked to show that like, I am willing to have, you know, rational discussions, you know, civil.
Civil.
About, yeah, about the issues in town. And some people aren't civil and I'd just be like, okay, if you don't want to have a civil discussion, that's fine. I'm just not going to engage with that.
For sure.
Right? I'm more than happy to, you know, if I see people post things, you know, that's like maybe not quite accurate, I'll be in like, oh, I actually, I don't think that's accurate. Here's where I think you can find the information. Here's where I found the information. Right? Cause there's information out there. There's a lot of people that just post what they think.
A hundred percent.
Right? A lot of the time.
Oh, for sure.
Sure. I mean, that's, that's what those spaces are for, right? But then I like to be the person there. It's like, great. That's a cool thought. Here's what my thought is. Here's. Here's what my thought is. Here's why I think this way. Um, and here's maybe some of the information that's related to that.
It's more of an evidence-based approach than.
Well, yeah, I mean, like every decision we make should. You know, based on some kind of study or fact or data or whatever. There's definitely room for opinion and experience, right? In these discussions as well. And you know, people that come to the table with opinions on local issues that are like, I've been here this long and, you know, this is what I think. It's like, okay, that, that is valuable as well. Right? People's lived experiences and their, you know, anecdotal information and that there is room for that in that decision-making process, right? Uh, as long as you're also, you know, comparing it to data and, and studies and you know, there's room for all of that information to form a decision around.
For sure.
You know, for sure. So that's what I want to have on council. I think that I do all of those things. To give you the, the better answer than.
The gist of it. That's great. Honestly, that's kind of the big question that we're going to ask, especially as people come to introduce themselves and kind of explain their platforms is why should people vote for you? And I think that drives a good point, the data-driven. I mean, we've broached this idea before that we're very much like, the way that we come up with ideas in this town is we develop one and then we kind of see whether it's good or it's bad. Well, it's like, there could be three or four multiple versions of the same plan. Like we're seeing like the train station ERP. Well, everything that's in there now might not be everything that's in there in the future.
Right?
Right. So I think exploring multiple avenues and taking the time to look at the evidence before we make these decisions. Like you said, the Banff sign, pedestrian zone, all things that people kind of want to, want to, uh, investigate further before moving forward on these things.
And I mean, my, my website, I've kind of boiled it down into, um, you know, what qualities I think I bring to the table. You know, leadership. Uh, oh man, I forgot what I put on my website. I've been sitting here so long, my brain is starting to.
Right.
Starting to cook. But yeah, I, I've put on there, I put on there. Yeah. I put on there a couple of my qualities, you know, the things that I bring to the table. What my priorities are for council, including things like housing, transportation, um, you know, protecting the environment. As well as, you know, some of the values, things that I think are important, uh, for, you know, a counselor in that position. I think a big part of it is like, you know, you want a council that works well together. That doesn't mean they're always going to agree.
Of course.
I, I think it's healthy to have a council that splits votes on things, right? That, you know, for this last term, we've had a council that often will vote, you know, all in or it's five, two. You see the same people often on, you know, when it's the five, two split, you see the, often the same people on both sides. Sometimes it swaps around a little bit. But if you have a healthy council, not everyone's agreeing, I would like to see, you know, the people that are on that council able to convince and persuade their other counselors why they think they're right. Right? Cause it's all good to have, you know, a dissenting opinion. But if you're good at defending it, then you should be able to bring people around to your side too, sometimes.
A hundred percent. Absolutely.
So I, I would like to see a little bit of that on council, like more, more people that ha- have a different opinion that are able to communicate and persuade more clearly and effectively with their other counselors and with, and with the town as well.
Well, I think you're not alone there. I think a lot of the townspeople would, uh, would definitely agree.
Yeah.
We have another petition that we wanted to talk about before we go.
Yeah, I'll do this one real quick. Cause, uh, while I'm going to be out on the campaign trail, shaking hands and kissing babies and all that. Uh, not really. That's, that's creepy. I don't know why that's. Why was that ever a thing? Who would just go around and kiss people's babies randomly? That's weird.
You see it on like every single election video. It's like.
Oh, look at the cute kid.
Yeah, look at the cute kid. This gives a public perception, maybe. I don't know.
Yeah, man, whatever. But yeah, it's creepy. Even during the last election, shaking hands wasn't even a thing.
True.
Oh, yeah, I guess.
Like elbow bumps.
Elbow bumps. Yeah. You weren't even allowed to shake hands. Well, last time, because I did my, my Martin, you guys were here obviously, but you were under the podcast. Cause last election, instead of doing door knocking, uh, I set up at the Central Park near the market, farmer's market.
Yeah, nice.
On Wednesdays because you couldn't, you couldn't actually have a, a political booth in the market. So I just applied for a special event permit and I set up a little tent in the park and I put a couple of chairs out and a little table and had my sign. That was just like, hey, you know that the whole like change my mind guy?
Yeah.
I was doing that except it wasn't change my mind. It was like, hey, just come and talk like if you want. Because it was two, 2021, COVID was like still like a thing.
Yeah.
So I didn't want to be like banging on people's doors and, you know, because people were kind of like.
Scared.
Protective and you had your bubble and I didn't want to invade anybody's bubble. So I just said, hey, come and see me if you want. I'm putting myself out there and I did like, like three months of just going to the market on Wednesdays and sitting there and chatting with people. Probably not as many people as I would have liked, but people are doing their thing, you know, but I think some people saw that I was doing that and it was, it was different. It was a, it was a different idea to deal with the situation we're in. Anyway, this time around, I'm going to be door knocking. So while I'm doing that, there's the, uh, forever Canadian petition. Uh, I am signed up as a canvasser for, so this is a petition to get a referendum question uh, in the next provincial election that says, do you agree that Alberta should remain in Canada? So this is, I mean, there's talk about, you know, separatism in Alberta. There's, you know, people that are pushing that sort of sentiment.
I see it everywhere.
And I, 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 I don't believe in that. I think we're, we're better off as a country than we are on our own. So, while I'm out campaigning for the municipal election, I'm also going to be collecting signatures for people that agree that they want the question on the next, uh, provincial election as a referendum question. There are other canvassers in Banff. There's quite a few in Canmore as well. But there are also, there's a person. Uh, Marion, who's one of our canvassers is doing remote, uh, signature collection.
Okay.
Uh, and by emailing uh, I will find it, but it is, I think it is AC Bow Valley. I've just lost it, but I will find it in a minute, but.
You can always send it to me on Instagram. We can always.
Yeah, there we go. I'll send it to you. You can post it. Um, but an email that you can send it to, uh, Marion will come to your house, collect your signature if that's what you want to do. There are also public events. You may have already seen a few of the other canvassers out and about. Uh, there's going to be a table at the Mel's Road Race.
Okay, cool.
I think one of the canvassers today is setting up at her house, uh, but also Facebook page, um, uh, forever Canadian Bow Valley Facebook page. So there's going to be events posted on there. If anybody wants to find out. Or keep an eye out. If you see, there's a lot of canvassers all over Alberta, uh, Banff, Canmore. I know in Canmore, Float Canmore is a permanent. Way to set up a, a permanent, um, location where you can go and sign up for that. So if you just want to go in and sign it and, and know that they're there, you can do that. There's all kinds of places to do it, uh, if that's something that you want to support, uh, or if you see me, just be like, hey, I signed the thing. If I don't have it with me, I'll make sure I catch up with you at some point. So.
Amazing.
But I'm going to get you guys to sign it if, if that's something you want to do.
Yeah, of course.
Before we're done. So.
Yeah. Always available. Always available. Mark Walker. Before we go, what are you most hopeful when you think of the future of Banff?
I mean, yeah, the, I've got a, I've got a six-year-old daughter. My biggest hope for the, for the town is that, uh, it is a place where she could build a life and a future, um, healthily, happily, you know, with, you know, the opportunities that I've had. Or more. That's kind of what I would hope for. Uh, and I know that, you know, people that are born and raised here don't end up sticking around. Like really, you only do that if you're, if you're, you know, in tourism really, but if you want to do something else, you have to go somewhere else. But if not her, then I would hope for those same things for the, you know, the kids, for the people that do want to come here and build that life. Like I was saying, uh, before how I just got lucky.
Right. I was going to re-bring up that quote because that was.
Yeah.
That's a great.
My, my hope is that it doesn't take that much luck and that we are able to as a community to make sure those opportunities are available for those that want them.
Amazing.
Yeah.
That's something I can stand behind.
No doubt. Me too.
Yeah.
I don't plan on leaving, so.
Right on. Well, thank you so much for your time today, Mark. This has been amazing conversation, your knowledge on housing and just kind of your, your fingers on the pulse of what I think the general townspeople are kind of dealing with. So thank you so much for coming by, sharing your platform with us or sharing your, not your platform, but your campaign ideas with us.
Yeah.
Sharing yourself. I think we painted a good idea of, of what Mark Walker stands for today and, uh, what he's going to do moving forward. So thank you so much. Again, if it is your first time joining us, don't forget, smash the like and subscribe. We got plenty more coming to you. Uh, we got a double header next week.
No doubt.
Two town council hopefuls back to back. So stay tuned for those announcements coming later this week. We're going to keep having these conversations. So join us next week to see who's next on. We're going to keep talking about especially housing, tourism, traffic, um, and protecting the frontline worker. I think that's.
I feel you're going to be talking about the same things for, for a bit.
We will, but I think it's important to get everyone's perspective on it, right?
To let the same issues. Everybody's got to, you know.
Yeah, we're all dealing with the same issues. I was thinking about this as we were kind of drafting these episodes and it's like, it would be dishonest or it wouldn't be fair to the other candidates to not ask them the same questions about the same topics. So it may seem repetitive, but we got plenty more coming for you. Like and subscribe. Go get yourself some drink shaft. Go to the Rosen Crown. They're dope. Matt, like every week.
See you next Tuesday.